I didn't even try that hard. Yeah, because they asked you to write your name.
Well, and then when you come in. I said, oh, wait a minute. But yeah, I squished it in there. I said, I am not going to get canceled out because I can do it. I must have. Misinformation being passed around?
And some people. I'm like halfway. I like the paper, but I like the technology.
I'm surprised that the possession is nine sensitive laws.
Call the water if I may. We'll get to it. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Pearl Al Crawford Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Uh, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With us this evening, we have trustee Joyce Nedrazinski, trust trustee Adriana Vuda, our library director, Trusilla Carter, trustee Benjamin Craver, and yours truly, Richard Clark. Uh, one of the first things on our agenda is to welcome new member. Unfortunately, our new member is not able to join us this evening, but we certainly want to welcome our returning member after a successful election campaign.
Thank you.
Adriana is able to stay with us now for three years.
Thank you.
All right, you have a full term. Uh, next, we have meeting minutes for the sixteenth of May, and we really haven't anything for the fifth of June. Please.
We do not have anything for the fifth of June, do we?
No.
I didn't see it. Okay. But when I saw that.
No.
Kathy Sandstrom.
Yes, we have the executive meetings, but this would have been the ten minutes that preceded that, and that we don't have. Uh, do we have any with the board's pleasure with regards to May sixteenth, let's say?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May sixteenth.
All right, there were a couple of things that I sent to Lisa, and she's corrected. Um, so, uh, looking for a second.
And I saw my name misspelled once, but I really don't think we have to correct that. It's fine, isn't it?
Well, I need my name to be Adriana because I'm not a guy.
I believe she has corrected that.
Well, I was Mr. I was Mr. Carter at one point, so.
Well, I do mind. I'm a woman.
Okay, admittedly, there were maybe a couple of things that we noticed is exactly what they should have been, but I again commend her in terms of the job she's been doing. And I know it's a task that no one at this table presently would like to have, so thank you, Lisa. Uh, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussions? We've already had some. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll have to resort to some sort of historical fiction with regards to June fifth, which shouldn't be too bad because there wasn't that much that happened in those few minutes. Now, there are the interesting things. Board reorganization. Uh, I have something that I think will delight a couple of us, if I may, if I have a moment to read this before we get to that.
Please.
Okay. All right, dear Crawford Library Trustees and Board of Selectmen, please consider this letter as my request for appointment to fill the one-year unexpired term of trustee in the library board. Having previously served as a Crawford Library Trustee for sixteen years, I would provide an immediate understanding of library needs as well as knowledge of the expectations, board members, uh, expectations of board members, sorry. Libraries, especially the Dudley Library, have been important to me throughout my life. I believe the Crawford Library serves as an important asset to our community and deserves a full board for oversight. I will state that while I would only be willing to serve out this one-year term, I do hope that you will consider me a worthy candidate. Sincerely, Patricia P. Court. Uh, that's one reason I didn't want to cancel this meeting because the game plan had been that we would hopefully prove this for recommendation to the board of selectmen and that somehow I could squeeze into the agenda before they met, and we could have a full board at our very next meeting. That's one of the reasons where I told her we would try to orchestrate that, and then I find out that Michelle is out today, so I don't have any way to shoehorn that in there, but that was the thought. So, that's done. I think there's something in the way of a motion perhaps, because the next step would be a recommendation to the board of selectmen.
I will make a motion to recommend Pat to join us.
Adriana, this is the way this thing works is we recommend that recommend someone to the board of selectmen, and then it's their approval.
It's a joint recommend, it's a joint appointment supposedly, according to the thing, but we just always pass it on, and they're always very happy to approve.
Given this individual's lengthy experience and knowledge and background, I can't see that there's any objections. So, we have a motion to recommend to the board of selectmen an appointment for the one-year term of Pat Court.
I don't really know her, so I'm not sure how I would recommend her.
Well, she has sixteen years' experience on the board.
Yeah, no, I think.
She's been with us for what? She was with us for the building of the library, she was very involved.
Okay.
Um, she was with us when we hired new, um, directors in the past and helped, um, she's done a lot.
She wants to come back?
That would definitely be that a valuable asset. So, we have a motion, and we.
Oh, I'll second.
Oh! You got tender hooks there for a minute. All right, all right, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's four in favor, so that's good. Now, the next part of the board reorganization, this is something we do in the first meeting after the human election.
Your last bit of news is very interesting. Pat and I have been co-chairs a couple times, and I'd love to do it again. But I haven't, I didn't even know this was in the, I hadn't talked to her months ago, but I hadn't talked to her recently, and at that point, she wasn't wanting to go, you know, what, her situation's obviously changed.
I honestly, I did know about this a day or so ago, but I wanted to hold it as something of a surprise because I thought that, you know, Christmas would have come early for you in this regard.
Yes, I agree.
Uh, okay, under the heading of reorganization, one of the things we look to as a chair, chairman, trustees, and I will take liberties at this point and nominate Mr. Craver.
And as I said, I'd like to postpone this to talk to Pat because I would.
Pat's only asking for a one-year term.
Yeah. Well, that's all that's available at this point, but that's her indication, is just the one year.
It sounds like the other, that's all she wants to do is one year.
I'm sorry?
No, it sounds like that's all she wants to do is one year.
Yes, yes. Well, we can cross fingers and.
One year, yeah. Um, I respectfully decline at the moment. And I'd like to postpone this until Pat's on the board for one month.
All right, I think I made a motion, so I don't have anyone.
Yeah, yeah, that wasn't even seconded anyways.
I'm still waiting for someone to say something, but that's apparently not going to happen. So, that motion's going to fail for lack of a second.
Oh, you need a second?
Yeah.
So, I would second that, then it just sounds like he doesn't.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I opened my.
But I, you know.
All right, motion fails for lack of a second.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then.
We table this in one month?
I think it's going to have to be because we can't go forward with it. The other thing is we typically would perhaps have a co-chair, but that's not going to go anywhere either, I suspect.
Um, let's repeat that again?
Well, I suspect we would, we would like, likely want a co-chair, but.
That's what I just said, yes.
So, that's not, that's a dead letter as well until you've had a chance to, uh.
Yeah, no, that's just a bit of news.
Okay. Then the other position that we have had in the past is that a secretary.
I think that's rather important with what's happened here, and I would say a secretary's position would be at, to depend on the video for Lisa to do the minutes. Not any secretary have to do what we've written here, but every motion invoked, that's all the secretary group required to do just for backup, just so if we have a situation like that, we know what the legal stuff was all about at the meeting. Because that's what minutes have to have. Besides that, the rest is fluff, honestly. I mean, it's nice to have.
Yes and no. I actually went through all the minutes since I joined because I want to clarify the clarification with story time, and I wanted to see exactly who said what when, and I found them very helpful. So, if we just had, um, just the motions.
Well, as I say.
No, 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 no.
Doesn't work.
That's what I'm saying, but I don't want to take anybody out of the meeting having to write like this.
It's really hard, yes.
It's hard to do both.
To be involved and.
You do both, I mean, unless.
We don't have a home of members in courts.
English is my third language. I'm not the person to do this.
I think to Mr. Craver's point that we would very much depend on the video as we have that, and it's the technical problems that we've had, and this isn't the first one. We've had them before. Hopefully, they're getting a better handle on it, the equipment, whatever, it'll be taken care of. But just to cover the basics so that we, if we need to, we could have something as a format or something as a skeleton, if you will, we could probably flesh that out in a couple of, something that looks like reasonable minutes, but it wouldn't be everything.
Legally, I think that's what we should have, so we have.
So, that said, did you want to take the position of secretary?
Oh, does that mean I don't have to be chair?
I think we're likely combined to.
How about we hold reorganization for a month?
Maybe taking turns. We each do it, no?
I'm not too sure about that. It's, it's, it sounds like a good idea, but.
We could do it the old-fashioned way, and that was a tape recorder sat right on the table.
We did?
How long ago was that? Oh, that was a while ago. I've been here too long. It just sat there.
Oh, I have a idea.
It was just an old-fashioned tape recorder.
How about we bring a Chromebook, I can bring a Chromebook, and we do voice to text. So, whatever we say.
It's terrible. It does a lot of very interesting things.
I use it a lot with my students.
Um, thinking about this and reading the problems we had, thinking back, I want to say it was, it's less than once a year we don't get a, a video. Is it more than that? People who watch it more often than I do.
I think it may be twice.
I think it has happened more often recently than it has in the past.
And there has been a change in terms of the people that have been doing the videos, so there may be a learning curve that we haven't quite gotten over yet. All right, so, um, it looks like we're going to hold that in advance until the next meeting, so our reorganization just got reorganized.
And why do you want to hold off then?
Because I will talk to Pat, because I mean, I mean, if, if anybody wishes to step up, because I mean, at our last meeting behind the scenes, it looked like I was being asked to run, honestly, and that's fine. But I'd rather do it as a co-chair, honestly.
Well, I would nominate Adriana so that she takes on the reins.
I was going that route, but I want, I want to see what Pat was up to, too. I just want to see what, but I, I agree with you. I was thinking that, too, but.
Yeah, because I think Adriana would like to step up and be more active.
I would like that.
And learn more about the board.
Is it your expectation that Pat will be the chair?
I don't know. I just, I don't know, because as I say, you took me by surprise.
Yeah, I mean, we're here tonight to reorganize.
Right.
If Adriana wishes to be chair, that's fine, too. I'll back, I'd gladly back.
I don't think I'm ready for that, but I'll do vice.
Well, no, I, as I said, if I'm going to do it, I'm going to delegate, and that's why I was thinking of co, because I don't, you know, I'm, honestly, I was thinking I would probably ask you to stay with Crawford's Corner because you've been in the middle of all this fun, Richard, and I do not want to be.
You've already put your program.
And as I said, I was already thinking this way until you, you just blew it right out of the water the first five minutes of this meeting for me.
I don't know. I'd like to nominate Ben. I'd like to go back to reorganization.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Ben Chair.
Chair, and I would second.
And I decline.
I would second the nomination.
And I'm declining as chair. I will take co-chair. I will go this route.
I would do that.
I'm saying vice. I'm saying co.
If I may, I think we have to vote before you can decline.
No, I think back in the nomination, you declined the nomination.
Yeah, he's declining.
I'm declining the nomination.
So, you want it worded co-chair?
Yes. I mean, and that, because that's a different situation.
I'm okay with that.
Together, yeah, we'd work together.
Yeah.
And I, I can see that.
I would like to nominate Ben Craver co-chair with Adriana Vuda.
I would love to second that, thank you. So, we have a, we have a co-chair and a co-chair.
Perfect.
And secretary's position somewhat pending, but we'll get to that next meeting. I assume that would be all right with the about-to-be-elected co-chairs. Uh, all those, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Let me, let me move over. Which one, which of you wants to move in here?
Today.
Well, sure.
I mean, why can't it be after this meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have to adjourn here. Okay, thank you. Now, we're back much further along, and again.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm glad you have to reorganize today.
All right, if, uh, do you want me to finish this?
Yes.
Okay, so if everything goes according to plan, and everyone is healthy and on scene, we'll have everybody here next week, or next month, rather, excuse me, for a full board meeting, uh, two new members.
Yeah, that would be fabulous. That would be so nice.
All right, so, uh, let us, let's see how far we can get into this. We have to be out of here at, what, quarter seven?
Uh, the next meeting comes in at seven.
All right, so why don't we shoot for ten then?
Yeah, we've been known to, so we may take lock-in.
All right, uh, let's take a look then maybe at the director's report. Uh, hopefully, everyone's had some time perhaps to take a look at that.
Yeah, it's an open meeting.
So. Uh, I did have a question. Email Robert H. Lord Company asking for a question on their products. What products are they?
They are a furniture company. They're based out of Connecticut.
Oh, okay.
Um, and they were recommended by one of my colleagues in Connecticut.
Do you have a copy of that?
So.
Thank you.
So, they are, they are in the business of supplying furniture to libraries and.
Libraries, medical offices, the commercial-grade furniture, the heavy-duty stuff.
What's their name, Givensella?
Robert H. Lord.
The last thing. And you obviously haven't received anything yet.
Um, I'm going back and forth with them about what we need, so I have not received like an estimate from them yet.
Okay, funding for that will be the issue.
I thought that was.
Uh, the board had voted last year to use some of the endowment funding for that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I, no, I thought it was, um, the gentleman who passed away.
Was giving two.
Was giving, and we did the, the shelving, and a part of that was.
No, his, that was just the room, furniture in the teen room.
Oh.
That was Ellen, Ellen Rude had given the money just for furniture in the teen room, not for the children's.
So, we have, how much did we appropriate for that?
Um, I, my recollection, I'd have to go back and check the minutes, is that it was, we'd like to use some of the money from the endowment check that comes every year, but we got to figure out how much this is going to cost first.
I don't remember that discussion at all. We've talked about furniture several times.
I know we've talked about the endowment check that we get annually, and we've, we've talked about maybe things that we might do with that. I don't know.
Yeah, it was, it was in the, the conversation about what to do with it, and if we didn't use it strictly for programming, it would be for furniture in the children's department, so.
Then a significant amount of that has gone to programming in the past, so.
Virtually, virtually.
All of it.
All of it.
All of it. I think the last time was what, about twenty-six thousand?
The check though.
Yeah, the check is about twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
But I mean, it depends on what the markets are doing and what the, you know.
All right, I understand, but I wonder how much of that we could carve out for our furniture, because, uh, on the children's side, some of the toughest, I think, showings.
Do you have a list? I'm sure you do. Do you have a list of like highest priorities?
The two love seats. The two love seats are the highest, yeah. And then some of the armchairs, but the love seats are the highest priority right now, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would just do highest priority and kind of tick down that one.
See what we can come up with in terms of what price.
Want to have all the estimates, and some of it depends on what fabric you choose and all that kind of stuff, so working on it.
So, have they promised the, some prices or?
So, with Robert H. Lord, I actually have to, um, we have to choose fabric, so they are sending samples.
Okay.
Um, and Lita and I will go through them and figure out what, what works with the, because we don't want to buy something, you know, have it, have furniture made with something that doesn't go with the other furniture. So, they were going to send some samples. And his comment was, if you don't like any of the samples, come visit. We have like thousands of.
Where, where are they located?
They're actually about ten minutes from my house.
An inch?
Yeah. I had no idea, but they're about ten minutes from my house.
So, do you think you're going to have it by next month?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
I mean, depends on, um.
And that you're just looking for a quote.
Yeah, so I, I reached out to them, and then since this, um, I had also reached out to another company that someone else had recommended. And WB Mason sent us a giant book of stuff. Um, it looks like, I have to follow up with, um, the rep. It looks like all of their stuff is either black or gray, like there are. Yeah, there's not a lot of color choices.
What color do you have now?
Blue and yellow.
Grab, grab yellow.
But like a black.
Gray goes with everything.
Black would look very odd with our.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so.
And stains in children's room.
Yeah, so I have to double-check, I have to double-check with him about.
So, the, the two love seats are the, the first objective, and then anything else we can shoehorn in there. Obviously, we don't want to put too much money on the programming, but the furniture thing is starting to come to a head, and we'll have to do something. All right, that's good. Further discussion with regards to the director's report. You mentioned Central Mass Library Advocates Meeting in May was dedicated to a discussion of the state budget situation and the impact on the funding of Massachusetts Library System and the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. What was the outcome of that? Were they getting more money and?
Um, we are not getting, we are not getting more money.
Nice try.
But James Lonergan, um, who's the head of the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, thinks that funding will be pretty steady, which is good, that we're not looking at cuts. But we're not, we're not expecting, you know, a sudden windfall for libraries next year from the state, so.
Well, that would have been nice, but we'll have to hold out for next year then. Any further discussion with regards to at least that part of the director's report or moving on to upcoming events?
Um, what part of the report have we just discussed?
The first page, I think.
Oh, okay.
The highlights, if you will. I mean, there were other things certainly there that we could take up.
No, 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 I didn't know. You can move on.
Yeah, okay. Ah, okay, now we're, we're getting into something. I, um, I looked at the video and read the minutes, and I know we had that question last time about volunteer readers, so I will volunteer. And I'm not going to defer to the next meeting when Pat's here to do that. I will do that as a.
You just have to let me know what, what evening.
Okay, then you go, you pick a book?
Well, first off, they don't do summer reading during the summer.
Yeah, no, we do one.
Oh, good, I've got a couple of months to bone up then.
So, I mean, what I, I wasn't sure is like, are we looking for volunteers for the summer or to do that nighttime?
Well, Adriana had indicated she wanted it to start as soon as possible, so this would be nighttime during the summer.
Before we go to the, to the volunteer part, um, I went through the minutes, and we agreed that, um, Ms. Carol was going to do the same thing twice, one time in the morning and one time in the afternoon, because we don't need any resources, we don't, there's no cost, and so on. And we said as a backup plan, we can have like a celebrity, um, story time, because we don't know if we're going to have someone every single week, and we don't want to cancel, right? So, what are the days when Ms. Carol could do it, and then when she can, maybe we can do.
Until the fall, it is, the only day that she does story time is lunchtime on Wednesdays. That's it. That's it. And she has programs already booked. She had them booked months ago for Monday nights.
Okay.
Starting in the fall, one, one Monday night a month has been youth advisory council for lord knows how many years now.
Okay.
So that's the teenagers, so she can't do it that night.
Is she running?
She can't do a Monday night?
She can't do the Monday night.
Okay, maybe someone else can do the celebrity that Monday night and, and she can do the three other Mondays.
I mean, I can, I can talk to her about that.
Let's just agree on this because it's just been, we went back and forth too many times.
All right.
All right, I will tell her that she's now single-handedly doing four storytimes a week, which I know you say that that, no, you asked her to do Wednesday afternoon.
Okay.
So she's.
This is it. This is the afternoon. I don't want another one.
She's doing Tuesday nights, or Tuesday mornings, Wednesday mornings, Wednesday afternoons.
Carter, I only want one afternoon storytime once a week. It doesn't have to be Wednesdays.
If I may, if we're talking about one storytime in a late date or evening, that's got to be a Monday or it has to be a Thursday.
And she is not available on Thursday evenings.
Okay, so let's do Monday.
I could, if, if it's acceptable, I could.
I kind of thought we had talked on it was going to be Wednesday night.
Well, it can't be Wednesday.
Yes, that was, that was, but it was Wednesday afternoon and Lita and I both understood from your conversation with her that she would be doing a Wednesday afternoon storytime.
Yeah, but for some reason that was a three o'clock and this is for people who work nine to five, we can't make it to the library at three. So I don't know why three o'clock was.
If, again, if we're going to do this and we're looking to do it after five.
Yes.
And I think your thought is that those people may have been probably just getting home at five or have just gotten home. It has to be on either Monday or Thursday.
Agreed.
And we know now that one of those Mondays per month can't be, unless we have our celebrity doing it. And let me get back to the mechanics involved there. Do we need Cory checks of that and all that? How's that? Okay, so I have been Cory checked in the past. I don't know how long those things.
You have to probably have one again.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and volunteers in the library also have to fill out a, you know, a form that says.
So.
Who would contact if you keel over.
Next step will be you and I are, we will, we will work out the mechanics in terms of getting me Cory checked. And then the option would be the Monday or the Thursday. I'm leading kind towards the Thursday option, but.
We can't. Lita is not here on Thursdays.
She has to be there?
Well, she's the children's librarian.
She's going to do three a month and somebody else is going to do the.
Who's going to do the Thursday evening?
Nobody. No, it's just Monday.
Just Monday.
Just Monday.
It has to be Monday evening.
Thursday evenings are adult programs because I am there, so Monday evenings are children's.
Okay, so it's a Monday evening.
So my thought is, is possibly, you know, to make it easier on everybody and for consistency. I don't mind volunteering. I would volunteer as well to go in. I have no problem with that. But I'm just wondering about why can't we move the teen advisory to a different afternoon at five?
Because that would have to be Thursday and again, Lita handles the teens. She's the youth services librarian.
Four, four?
Well.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying like we get stuck in a schedule.
I think the fewer parts you start moving around, the better off we are. It's not.
Consistency helps.
But consistency.
All right, well, this happening would be a new consistency, if you will, because we have, I haven't done it before. I don't know, you have in the past at some point, I know that, but we're going to start something, start something new. So let's start it off with its own special time and we'll leave everything else in place as it is so in a minimum disruption. And I will do it on a Monday. We'll get the Cory check done, whatever the heck is involved with that. And then we'll, between you, I and Lita, I think we can come up with a book.
Yeah.
Hopefully not too long.
Well, why don't we agree on a time?
New one. I don't think that's.
No, it doesn't have to be new.
It's the same one that they're doing that.
It's the same.
Somehow I want to get the book in advance.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm not sure that doing the same thing is going to work because she has it very carefully separated by age group. And so are you saying that you want this to be just for toddlers or just for preschoolers? She doesn't do the same thing for both groups.
Yeah.
She does age appropriate programming.
It, it can be the same thing because we don't have the same audience. Like people who are there at eleven are not going to be there at five o'clock.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
It's going to be easier for.
Do you want, do you want her to do the same thing she does for toddlers or the same thing she does for preschoolers?
I think you get for preschoolers myself. I don't know what about toddlers. I think you want.
I say preschool.
Preschool.
Yeah, toddlers can't really follow along.
Talking four and five.
Yes.
Four and five.
All right, and what time would you like on Mondays?
On Monday?
I would say five thirty.
Five thirty. Okay. I can't do the third Monday of the month, but the others should be available.
When is the?
First Monday.
First Monday?
No, it's all second Monday. Sounds like the plan. We're targeting second Monday and that would be starting in September? Okay.
September first or September?
Um, it is after Labor Day. It's once the school year starts. Okay.
And well, we've got some meetings between now and then. We can flesh this out a little bit more.
So between now and then, can I ask, can you get us the Cory?
You have to go to Michelle. I don't do Cory.
Well, the form from the library then. If you could bring it next meeting.
I'll just email it to you.
Fill it up.
Yeah, I have one more question. So if Ms. Carol does it three times a month and then we volunteer once a month, right? Let's say we, we're covered for four months if everyone does it. Then after that, maybe we can advertise. Maybe we can put something on the website saying we're looking for volunteers because people are not going to know that they can do this. Like we, we want to, yes.
I, I think.
Maybe.
We can't speak for them, but I think some of what we might approach would be the fire chief, the police chief.
Yearing towards them.
Yeah, well.
A fireball. Let them come in and shoot them. You know, it'd be fun. I mean, the kids would be gaga.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying we should advertise it because people are not going to just call the library and say, hey, I want to read a book. You know, like we have to let them know.
Yeah, we would do that. We would have to say.
Sounds good.
I don't want, I don't know if you want to advertise.
No, I don't have to.
I'm not sure you want to advertise. I think you want to ask specifically just because.
I just want to make sure someone asks and we don't have the Monday and there's no one.
But somebody.
Because then I have to show up every single Monday. I will.
You know what we can look at? Like October is fire prevention. We can.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we already, we, we are already on top of that for the regular things.
One for preschoolers.
Yeah.
Yes.
That does, I mean, you know, I mean, with the uniform and it'd be great if they could drive up in a truck. That would be wonderful, but that's probably a little.
Sure, let's go.
I don't know if there's enough money in the budget for that.
So moving forward, we have the beginnings of a plan for our celebrity readers for toddlers, four to five-year-olds approximately. Beginning Monday in September, pending a few other administrative details to be resolved. Good, thank you. All right, so we do have again a list of upcoming events going out into October.
Lots of stuff going on.
Lots of things and we got a lot of numbers here for May two thousand twenty-three. How are the teen groups doing? Who's, who's still up? We got good city?
We have a pretty steady attendance. Teen, teen groups in general are rough, but we, we average about five or six, which is pretty, pretty steady. And we see new faces fairly often.
That's good.
So.
Thursday, May eighteenth. Is that cost correct?
What, for the?
For the reader?
Yeah. Yeah.
I thought there was maybe two minutes.
No, no, and he was very inexpensive. Big name authors can cost easily six figures. So that was, he was a very inexpensive one.
Did we go into the wrong structure?
That was a, okay, Melzer Trust they covered the.
Yeah, Smaller Trust covered that and then the Friends of the Gladys Kelly Library provided food. Fed, fed him. But yeah, that, that included his speaking fee, airfare, lodging, the whole.
Oh, all that in.
Yeah, no, that, that was included.
Total or that's not including that?
The total including food was about eleven thousand by the time we were done. But his travel expenses and everything are built into that ten thousand.
That's neat.
Hefty fund.
It is. That would have been a lost eight and a half.
I have a question. So I'm looking at the toddler time that's at three forty-five. And there's a lot of times where we have zero for attendance.
Yeah.
I was wondering if we can not do that because we would start doing the storytime at five thirty. Because we don't have anyone at three forty-five.
Yeah, that's what you had just said, was to not do the Wednesday afternoon. That's what I just wrote down, so.
Sounds good. I thought this was a different one.
All right. Well, that was interesting that, that for Mr. Heller.
Yeah, like I said, he was, he was quite inexpensive, the, the committee. We looked at, we looked at a number of authors that we had to rule out because twenty-five or thirty thousand is, is just not an option for us, so.
I think I may have mentioned is the general name Philbrook, who's written several books. One about Custer and the Little Beagorn, one of the Bayflower was the title of.
Nathaniel Philbrook is going to run you. He's in the twenty thousand dollar range.
Okay. I do believe, I understand that he's living in Woodstock, so I don't know that we'd be hit with that heavy a food bill.
Or, or lodging.
Or lodging. If that were, if that in fact the case, I might be able to get in touch with somebody in Oxford. They had him there recently.
We're meeting again on Monday to start figuring out because the Maltzer grant to the one book thing was only half of what we had asked for, so that, that is really going to make next year interesting. So we're meaning to start brainstorming.
That Maltzer grant, was that Webster?
Webster did and then I wrote a letter of support saying that.
No, I know that.
I mean, I think, I think we possibly could write our own and ask that we're going to support this and will you support us doing that also?
We've actually decided next year that since we want to make it truly a joint event between the two libraries, that we will make it truly a joint application. So it won't just be me writing a letter of support. It would be, we are doing this together. It's two libraries and two agencies.
Right, and I know it was the conflict that evening with the, that is the Black Tavern.
Yeah, they did not realize, and they'd already picked the date by the time I came on board, so.
We're looking through the mechanics.
And Oxford's been dropped out of this?
Oxford has been approached, but they haven't been particularly interested.
I know. The first year, we did do a lot with them, but we participated. This year, we did a lot more with them.
This year I was, I was invited. My understanding is that they also reached out to the director in Oxford and she was not. She has, for whatever reason, has chosen not to participate, so.
Well, maybe next time. Moving along, watching the time, we have library budget. And I know there's a select meeting that's going to follow this and I'm sure there'll be a number of other meetings in the next, some of the coming weeks so that some of these budgetary issues will be in flux going forward. But that's to be determined, I guess, you know. Mr., has the waiver issue been broached by the town manager at all?
No, because he and I had a conversation and he understands that that's not something that we, we do not initiate. That comes from the state and that that comes when I do my annual statistical report.
Did he see that email that got sent out from that person?
Mary Rose Quinn had sent out an email that she wants to be contacted.
I already contacted her. She already.
Did you send that off to Mr. Ruda?
No, but I've let him know that the state library is, the MBLC is aware.
But what was the feedback from? There you go.
Ringing silence.
Yeah, I would, I would.
You mean from John Ruda or from Mary Rose?
From Mary Rose.
Oh, Mary Rose. So thank you for letting her know and, you know, she'll see our paperwork when we do the statistical report.
So I don't know why they needed to know.
I think.
Sounds like they were going to start working with you.
No.
July first when I read it.
They can't start working with us until we do the, the report, the statistical report, the budget report that we do every year. That says this is how much money we spent last year and this is how much money we've got. And we send that in. But I think what they are trying to do is figuring out how many libraries are anticipating this because they have to figure out their meeting schedule.
Just get a rough number out there. Okay, so we, we broached the subject and we'll follow up.
So she and I, she and I went back and forth once or twice today and.
All right, I'm watching the time again and before, I don't know that we're going to get too much further into this, but one of the things we do have to do, we do have to come up with is a next date in terms of.
You put in July twenty-fifth and we've usually been the fourth until we move it, until we move it, but.
We've been all over the place.
Well, yeah, we have. And hopefully we'll get back to something under Mr. Craver.
Tonight I really feel this is.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Well, we want to get the path thing resolved and get that forward to the selectmen because otherwise we would have effectively lost a month at least on that.
Yeah.
And she's only going to be with us for a year, if you will, so that's one twelfth gone. And then depending somewhat on what their agenda will allow. So is it twenty-fifth of July?
Yep.
And everybody's radar?
I go to Europe on the seventeenth, come back on the fifth, August fifth, so.
We will not all, I must admit, I disappear in the winter too, so we're not all going to be here. But as long as we can get a form, we've got to keep this thing.
Okay, yes.
Sounds good. I just want you to know I'm not going to be here.
The other thing I would ask is, I know the selectmen's meeting follows. I think we, those of us might want to go over there and see what's.
Oh, yes.
And I don't know that it would be necessary, but maybe a possibility of something before the twenty-fifth, depending on everything else that's going on in town. I don't think that's going to be likely, but just raising the possibility. But right now we're on the flux for the twenty-fifth of July.
And the memo from Mr. Ruda seems like he's going to be meeting with department heads.
He's got police, fire department, highway and the whole host of characters.
Yes, and as you pointed out, you do let us know because we.
I would say, I would say we should.
Yeah, we should be there.
Yeah, the, the, the other thing that of significance will be this super town meeting within forty-five days to start by the major school district. And that, I don't know within the forty-five days. This is the date June thirteenth. At some point. Some, whatever the date happens to be there and that will be a significant milestone in terms of where everything is going or not going.
Which is the one that works me.
So, and again, any of us are able to attend that upcoming super meeting along with any of the other boards or selectmen, FAA or any other town bodies as it might feel appropriate. All right, fresh for time. Can we get a adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All right, end of discussion. Everybody in favor? You're on the hook next week.